Ladies and gentlemen, if I could ask you to take your seats. I would like to thank you all for coming out this evening. We have a quorum of 100 and we are north of 100 so we can actually start this meeting on time. And as I indicated in the Elcat broadcast that hopefully some of you have seen, there are not many articles on the warrant and some of the articles are not going to be acted on that are on the warrant, so I'm hoping this will move very expeditiously and will get you home to enjoy the rest of the evening. Let me start by indicating, as I always do, where the fire exits are. There are two in the rear of the hall, one on my right and one on my left, and then behind me on either side, there are also exits. May I ask that you stand for our prayer? "O God, we have assembled tonight to exercise this form of governance in which we order our affairs. Let us come together in a spirit of community, recognizing that all of us are different and that there is room for healthy disagreement and constructive communication. Let us consider carefully our civic responsibility, not only to our generation but the generations to come, so that we can leave to them a town as strong and beautiful as the one we have enjoyed." Please remain standing for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. A few housekeeping rules before we begin, and I'd like to start by welcoming any new residents, new voters, or first timers here. If you have a cellphone or a pager, please silence it for the course of the meeting. You should have been given, if you are a resident intending to vote, you should have a white tag; otherwise, you should have a red tag. If you wish to speak on any of the matters that come before us, you will please move to one of the two microphones in the hallway. You do not need to, nor should you refer to anybody by name. If you have a motion or a substantive amendment to an existing motion that's on the floor, it needs to be in writing. I initial it and hand it to the town clerk as part of our permanent record. If we need to have a teller count, and we do have a couple of two-thirds votes, so if it's not clear to me that we have a two-thirds vote, we will have a teller count. The doors in the rear of the hall will be closed for the pendency of that count, so nobody will be able to come in or leave. There is, as I said, a couple of, I think, three or perhaps four votes that will require a two-thirds vote, one of which is a proposed amendment to our zoning bylaw, and three of which relate to real estate, so we have that to look forward to. And finally, before we begin, I just would like to recognize our new town accountant, Sarah Menard. I'm not sure if she's still here. I know she was here earlier for the appropriations committee meeting. Oh, she's sitting right there, right at the -- [applause] And we welcome Sarah. With that, let's move on to Article One. Mr. Gorman, could you speak -- pull the microphone over so that the folks can hear you?
Article One. I move that the town vote to transfer from year 2015 reserve account number 1327-5780, $5,000, to account number 01-519 for the purpose of maintaining nuisance property pursuant to Section 8.030B of the general bylaw.
Is there a second?
No action was taken on this.
Okay. No action on Article One. Article Two.
Article Two. No action was taken on Article Two.
Okay.
Good evening. I'm Paul Federici, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen. There will be no action taken on Articles Three or Four. No, there was no act -- there was no action on Article Two either. As far as Article Two? In speaking to -- in discussions with the Appropriations Committee, and they'll be happy to follow up on this, articles that are -- that have to do with either stipends or salaries are preferably taken up at the regular town meeting after budgets have been done, so we've held off. It's not going away, it's just being postponed till the May town meeting.
Well, there's nothing to vote on because there's no -- there's no motion that has been seconded, and the selectmen are not moving forward with that article at this Article Five.
I move that the town vote to re-appropriate $25,000 of the appropriation from the Community Preservation Fund voted at the October 23, 2013 special town meeting for the Pine Knoll Pool, Article Nine, to legally -- to the Legally Undesignated Fund, Community Preservation Fund, General Reserve, Fund Number 2615-3590. Said money no longer being required to complete the original purpose of the appropriation.
Is there a second?
This and the following two articles are housekeeping articles. These were projects that either came in under budget, in this case, the pool came in under budget, and so there was money left over. It needs to be re-designated back into the Community Preservation General Fund, or for projects, as in the next article, that were canceled.
And it's my understanding, sir, that this has been recommended by both the Community Preservation Committee and by the Board of Selectmen?
That's -- I can say Community Preservation. I would have to ask the Board of Selectmen if they recommend this. Yeah, it's recommended by both.
Yes, sir.
Yes, Mr. Moderator. Just wanted to clarify that the pool project was not bonded. Is that correct?
The second appropriation was not bonded. The first one was.
So the one that we discussed at the prior town meeting was not bonded, as we discussed at that meeting?
That's correct. This money is for the project -- the part of the project that was not bonded.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any further questions or discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. That motion carries unanimously. Article Six.
I move that the town vote to re-appropriate the following amounts. $5,670 of the appropriation voted at the May 17, 2010 annual town meeting for fencing the historic Green Lawn Cemetery. Article 16, the funds not being required to fund the voted purpose. The $5,000 appropriation voted at the May 20, 2013 annual town meeting for listing the Norcross House on the National Register of Historic Places, Article Number 19, the funds not being required to fund the voted purpose. And the $35,000 appropriation voted at the October 15, 2007 special town meeting for moving the historic Railroad Depot, Article Number Seven, the funds not being required to fund the voted purpose. And restore these funds to the Staric Resources Community Preservation Fund Reserve, Fund Number 2618-3590.
Is there a second?
In this case, the fence came in under budget. Norcross has decided they are not going to list on the National Register and has revoked their request, so that project is canceled. And the town never got possession of the depot, so that project is canceled.
Are there any questions, or is there any discussion? And again, it's my understanding this has been recommended by both the Community Preservation Committee and by the Board of Selectmen.
That is correct.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay.
Nay.
That motion carries. Article Seven.
I move that the town vote to re-appropriate the following amounts. $120 of the appropriation voted at the May 18, 2009 annual town meeting for heating, ventilating, and lighting improvements at Inward Commons, Article 16, the funds not being required to fund the voted purpose. $26,656 of the appropriation voted at the May 17, 2010 annual town meeting for the replacement of windows at Village Green, Article 17, the funds not being required to fund the voted purpose. And $275 of the appropriation voted at the May 21, 2012 annual town meeting for an automatic door and concrete ramp at Inward Commons, the funds not being required to fund the voted purpose. And restore those funds to the Community Housing, Community Preservation Fund Reserve, Fund Number 2619-3590.
Is there a second?
In this case, all the projects came in under budget. In the case of the windows, that was a supplementary appropriate -- part of a supplementary appropriation for the windows, and they were able to come in well under budget, so we were happy with that.
Are there any questions, or is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify -- oh, and again, this has been recommended by the Community Preservation Committee and by the Board of Selectmen.
That's correct.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. That motion carries unanimously.
I move that the town vote to amend the Town of East Long Meadow general bylaws by deleting Section 4.100A and inserting in place thereof, "A: The school committee shall consist of five members whose terms shall be three years each, with terms to begin July 1 and end June 30. One shall be elected with a term to begin July 1, 2015; two to be elected with their terms to begin July 1, 2016; and two to be elected with their terms to begin July 1, 2017, provided, however, the current school committee members shall serve until the successor to his or her office takes the oath of office on the applicable July 1, or if it's a Saturday or Sunday, the next business day." The reason for this article and the amendment is just to make our term -- the school committee terms more consistent with the school year and the fiscal year. This does not in any way change when the annual town election will occur.
Are there any questions with respect to this motion?
I have a question, and I also stand --
Could you get a little bit closer to the mic, please? Good? Better?
Okay. I have a question, and I stand in opposition to this article. And let me give you my position and same time ask the question. The voters vote every April at our town election, and say someone from the school committee who's running for reelection and was defeated overwhelmingly for the policies they had pushed during their tenure. You're therefore allowing a candidate who lost the reelection bid to remain in office for about two and a half months, pushing the views that the voters had opposed. I can understand the position you want so they can -- the people on the board can remain there because they've been educated during the year. But at the same time, I think the overwhelming justification would be let the voters speak. And furthermore, it used to be the position where more senior members of an elected board would take the newer members under their wing to teach them procedure, policy, and answer any questions. So for those two reasons, I would stand in opposition.
Thank you, sir. You said you had a question.
I think the question was, if you try and balance your view against my view, do you think -- well, did you take into account if a person went for reelection and was overwhelmingly defeated, how the voters would react? And is that fair to the majority of the voters who wanted that person replaced?
Your viewpoint was discussed, and it was taken under consideration. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I agree completely with the previous speaker. I think to do this piecemeal and changing it for two boards that are elected, or a committee and a Board of Selectmen, which is the ensuing article, is kind of a piecemeal approach to our town government. We have other elected boards, the Board of Public Works, the Planning Board, the Board of Assessors, and I feel if there's going to be a change like this, it should be done townwide through the bylaws and not article by article here and there in the course of a year or two years. I am in opposition.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions or comments with respect to the motion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay.
Nay.
I would say that motion was defeated. Article Nine.
Hi. This Article Nine is very similar to Article Eight. I move that the town vote to amend the town -- excuse me, I move that the town vote to amend the East Long Meadow bylaws, Board of Selectmen 4.030A, by deleting the existing language and inserting in place thereof. The Board of Selectmen shall consist of three members whose terms shall be three years each with the term to begin on July 1 and end on June 30. One shall be elected with a term to begin on July 1, 2015; one to be elected with their term to begin on July 1, 2016; and the one shall be elected with their term to begin on July 1, 2017, provided, however, the current Board of Selectmen member shall serve until the successor to his or her office takes the oath of office on the applicable date of July 1, or if it is a Saturday or a Sunday, the next business day.
Is there a second? There is a second? Thank you.
Okay.
May I have the motion, please?
This was brought forward to the town to make a decision. The understanding was that I can make aye statements. When I came on the board and you're thrown into a budget situation, and you don't have a lot of information, and if you're starting in July at the beginning of the fiscal year, you're able to just come in with a fresh start. It's an idea. It's brought to the people to see what you think about it, and we'll go as you say.
Are there any questions or comments with respect to the motion? Yes, sir.
I'm Pete Punderson, Pease Road.
Could you get a little closer to the mic?
Pete Punderson, the Pease Road.
Thank you.
Good evening. I would stand in opposition to this for the same reasons that Mr. Levine stood in opposition to the last one. And I would think that anybody that's running for an office, it would be incumbent upon them to make sure that they knew the issues before they even got to where they wanted to get to. It's a basic rudimentary policy of running for an office. Thank you.
Are there any additional questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay.
Nay.
That motion is also defeated.
Article Ten, there'll be no action taken, but I'll read it just the same.
No, you don't need to. If there's not going to be any action on it, you do not need to read it. Article Eleven.
We move on to Article Eleven. I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to grant an easement for transmission of electricity by National Grid to the Department of Public Works service area as described in the handout entitled, "National Grid DPW Service Area Easement",
Do you want to indicate, did you have any presentation you wish to make on that? I mean, you don't have to, but if you wish to, you can.
That last easement is an easement that runs through the DPW yard behind the salt shed. Currently, the power company has an overhead easement, and they wish to run some utility lines underground in the same area behind the salt shed. It really doesn't affect anything that they don't have an easement now. They just need to have an underground easement. There's currently an overhead easement running through the DPW behind the salt sheds. The power company simply is asking for an underground easement to run power in the same
Mr. Wilson, could you give me a copy of the attachment to the motion that has the description, just so that's part of the official record? Any questions? Any questions or comments? All right, this will require a two-thirds vote, ladies and gentlemen. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion carries.
Article Twelve. Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, I vote to amend -- I move to ask the town to vote to amend the East Long Meadow zoning bylaw 1991 revision by replacing Section 5.8 in its entirety. All is set forth in Article Twelve of the warrant with the addition of, "Section 5.84 Industrial District. Item B: One ground sign shall be permitted and shall conform to the setback side yard and rear yard for the industrial district. The top of the sign shall not be more than 20 feet above mean grade of the building lot on which the sign is placed. Such sign shall not contain more than 50 square feet. G: Gasoline and/or compressed natural gas, CNG, filling and/or electric charging stations and garages. One: Gasoline and/or CNG filling and/or electric charging stations and garages are limited to the following signs. A: They may, if they elect to do so, divide the one exterior sign affixed to the front wall of the building, to which they are entitled as here and above provided, into separate signs affixed to and parallel to such wall, and indicating the separate operations or departments of the business, provided, however, that the total of the area of the separate signs shall not exceed the maximum area permitted under this bylaw for a single exterior sign on such wall. In addition, one sign conforming with the terms of Section 5.84B standing indicating the company whose gasoline is being sold may be erected of such type, in such location, and in such manner as the planning board may permit. The standard type of gasoline pump bearing thereon in usual size and form, the name or type of gasoline, and the price thereof shall not be deemed to be in violation of this bylaw. Temporary or movable signs of any and every type are specifically prohibited, and the Good evening. I'm Marilyn Richards, and I'm a member of the Zoning Bylaw Review Committee. Also serving with me on that committee is Mary Flahive Dixon, Ned Schwartz, Ralph Page, and Tyde Richards. As a committee, we were appointed by the Planning Board and given the charge to review the entire zoning bylaw. Tonight, we are pleased to prevent -- to present, rather, modifications to the signed bylaw. First, though, I think I need to apologize for the reading of the motion that was probably technically confusing to most of you. I heard all your papers rustling, trying to figure out where I was. As an explanation, these additions to the motion are simply housekeeping issues. The language was intended to be included in the first place, and it does not add anything substantive to the bylaw. So those motions, the addition of the motions that I read had been omitted inadvertently, so that's why I read them into the record as part of the motion. The bylaw language as written in your warrant is simply the relocation of current language to its appropriate zoning district section. Again, there are no substantive changes to this bylaw, and what you are voting on tonight is simply a format change. Also included within this format change are a few minor new words. The additional words of compressed natural gas and electric charging stations were added to address alternative fuel options. In addition, new criteria for nonprofit message lawn signs were added addressing size limitations and time limits. These changes are not substantive and have no effect on the intent of our bylaw. I thank you for listening. I'm happy to take any questions if anyone has any.
Are there any questions with respect to the motion? Yes, sir.
My question is not in the writing of the bylaw.
Could you speak a little closer to the mic, please?
I'm sorry. I wondered what the approach is going to be to enforcement of all of these bylaws. I'm not acquainted with who is doing it today. I don't know who will be doing it with the new structure that has been set up for signs. It looks like quite a bit of responsibility, and I wondered if there have been plans in place to identify the person responsible for the approval of signs and the continued review of signage in our town. Thank you.
It's my understanding, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but it's my understanding that nothing before the town meeting this evening doesn't already exist, that there's no new duties being imposed, that this is simply relocating from within the existing signed bylaw to make each district, I guess, be more -- have more clarity as to where what is allowed in that particular district, but that there's no -- that whoever has been enforcing the zoning bylaw would continue to enforce the zoning bylaw, and that this does not impose any additional duties on that individual.
I'm sorry for bringing that up, but it is a question that I had, and I suppose I can talk to somebody at a later date and find out.
Oh, no, I think I've answered it. I mean, I don't -- if your question was who's going to do it, it's the same person who does it now. And if you're -- if you were questioning whether there are additional duties, it's my understanding that there are none. But Ms. Richards, maybe you could correct me if I'm incorrect.
No, you are correct. And just to say that our bylaws are only as good as the enforcement of them. So -- but we need standard So, but we need standards for our town, and so we forge ahead, and other than that, we have no involvement with enforcement.
Thank you very much.
Are there any additional questions or comments? Okay, again, as a change to the zoning bylaw, this requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. That motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Article Thirteen. I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to, to take in fee simple pursuit to provisions of General Laws, Chapter Seventy-nine, or otherwise acquire as townway betterly lane as described in Article Thirteen of the warrant, and that the reading be waived and no damages be awarded for said taking.
And, Mr. Wilson, I believe you said that to take it in fee simple, just to make sure I understood, in the second line of your motion?
Correct.
Okay, is there a second? Thank you.
This, this is simply a new subdivision that was developed, and it's completed at this point. All the inspections have been made, and the town is, the road is, has been built to the town standard, and the developer cares to turn it over to the town at this point.
May I have the motion, please?
Any other questions?
Are there any questions or comments from those present? All right, as a taking, this requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. That carries unanimously. Article Fourteen.
Article Fourteen is simply the same thing, different street. I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to take in fee simple pursuit of the provisions of General Law, Chapter Seventy-nine, or otherwise acquire as a townway wisteria lane as described in Article Fourteen of, of the warrant, and that the reading be waived and no damages be awarded for said taking.
Is there a second?
Again, this is the same thing. Another street has been developed, it's been inspected, and the developer's ready to turn it over to the town.
Are there any questions? Again, as a real estate taking, this requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. That carries unanimously. Ladies and gentlemen, I would like to thank you for attending. I would like to thank Elcat and its staff for broadcasting this, and I will see you at the May town meeting. Motion to adjourn?
Aye.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, that motion carries quite unanimously.